Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, May 29th. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I understand tonight we have a large number of distinguished guests. I think in total over 120 students were invited tonight. So if I could have a roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Alex Delipoli.
Here.
Patrick Grudy.
Here.
Aaron Lundstedt.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Ratsor.
Here. Okay, very good, thank you. Our agenda tonight, we will have an educational presentation where we'll recognize, as I said, over 100 students tonight. We'll have a brief president's report, reports, final reports from the 2011-2012 School Board Representatives, superintendent's report, approve the consent vote agenda, have updates from the Program and Personnel Committee, Facilities and Finance Committee, there is no update from the Property Committee, Special Education District of Lake County, no update from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and that should wrap it up for tonight. Okay? All right, so let's begin with the highlight of the evening. If I could ask Dr. Swick to kick us off.
Yes, we're going to start tonight with recognition of our Special Olympics. They win so many awards that we make the decision to wait till the end of May, and then this is one of our favorite groups always to come forward to the board meeting, and we just wait till the end of May so that they can tell us a synopsis of all their awards that they've won throughout the year. So at this time, I'm going to ask Andy Compton, their head advisor, to come forward and give us a brief report.
All right. Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it, and it was another great, successful year for us. Lot of fun. We had four or five new athletes once again. We keep growing. Makes it even more fun. The parents that we are adding tonight, we just went through our awards ceremony downstairs. Great, great time, and great to see everybody showed up tonight for the first time ever, which is a hard thing to do, but they all were here. Awesome. And they celebrated in such a great way, and we've got two people that are leaving this year, which is always sad. But on with that. We had a great year. The first thing, I'd just like to say, thank you guys for an awesome, awesome year. All right? Thanks to the coaches too. We had Coach Jim Rogers, Cory Atwell, Sean Kelly, and then there were a few others that helped us along the way. One of them, a brother or two that came in and stepped in when we needed them. It was great. This year started with basketball, and basketball's a long season for us. It goes from November all the way through to this year, March, and we did very well this year. We had two teams, all 17 athletes were participating, all 17 athletes came together with two teams. Both teams made it downstate, which is the first time ever for us. So all 17 athletes in March, took a coach bus and went on downstate and had a great time and finished third and fourth in the state. On top of that, we had 12 athletes qualify for the Winter Games, which is in Galena, and they brought home a plethora of medals at that. And we have going right now, bocce just finished up, bowling's about to go, we had track and field go, we have eight more athletes heading down to the state winter, state summer games at ISU in a couple of weeks. We also have a young man here tonight who has joined our Global Messenger Group, which is basically huge in the United States, where they go out and tell all about Special Olympics and their experiences, and they are chosen, there's only a few every year from each state that can get this honor, and he's here tonight too. So if you ever want to hear from, about Special Olympics, he's the guy to call. But a great year, we won 90 medals, so 90 more medals to add to everything, on top of the 24 individual medals you guys got for state, which was awesome. So 90 medals, I think 39 only gold, 31 silver, 20 bronze, and then a few ribbons, but you know. Anyway, they did awesome this year, and they continue to do awesome, continue to amaze myself and all the coaches, and it is awesome to have your support. I can't thank you all enough. It's just been outstanding, and I know for a fact, as I go throughout the state, and we've gone to a lot of places in the state, and not, there is not a, there's not a district that supports Special Olympics the way you guys do. It's unbelievable. So I really appreciate that, and we all appreciate that. So thank you. And move on to introduce some of the guys that are still here. All right? First off, first-year guy, and he competed in all, all these guys competed in basketball, so you don't even have to say it, so they're gold medal winners, all of them, and I'm just going to announce them, they did a great job this year. Eduardo Aguilar, he's the first guy. John Servin, he's our, he's our global messenger. Chris DeRose. All right, and if anybody doesn't know, I'm a Cub fan, and he continually wears stuff to bug me. So Trevor Furman. One of our graduating seniors from Vernon Hills, Michael Ivors. And our old lady of the bunch, she spent eight years in our program, and she is moving on, Ann Jennings. And Austin Josenhans. And of course, we saved the best dressed guy for last. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Back in November, Andy received an award, and we wanted to recognize him at an earlier board meeting, and he said, "Well, why don't you just do that when we recognize the kids at the same time?" So that's how modest he is, and how selfless and directed toward his students he is. But in November, Andy received a Hero Award from the Maggiano Hero Award process, and I want to just read you a few things about Andy and receiving this award. District 128 Special Olympics Coach Andy Compton was recognized as an outstanding supporter of Special Olympics Illinois when he was awarded the 2011 Maggiano Hero Award. Compton received the honor at a dinner and presentation held at Maggiano's Little Italy and Schaumburg on November 30th, and for the fifth year in a row, Maggiano's Schaumburg has helped Special Olympics Illinois honor key volunteers and supporters in the Chicagoland area who have made major contributions to Special Olympics, and Coach Compton was one of nine Hero Award recipients for 2011. Special Olympics Illinois cited the following reasons for presenting the award to Coach Compton. One, Compton feels strongly about the many opportunities that Special Olympics provides to children and adults because of his efforts. The athletes he coaches in District 128 have benefited tremendously from Special Olympics training and competition. Andy has been involved with Special Olympics for eight years. He's worked hard to grow his program and encourages his athletes to compete to the best of their abilities. Under Andy's coaching, the district athletes compete in snowshoeing, basketball, bocce, track and field, bowling, and floor hockey. Andy took his coaching to the next level by attending trainings with, which earned him a coaching spot on Team USA in snowshoeing for the 2009 Special Olympics World Winter Games in Boise, Idaho. Andy went more than the extra mile when he advocated for hosting a Special Olympics District basketball competition at Vernon Hills High School. And lastly, Special Olympics would like to thank Compton for providing such great leadership to his team and for recognizing the learning experiences athletes carry into schools, jobs, home, and community.
Next at this time, I'm looking for Cheryl Ballinger. There's so many people, there she is. What I'd like is to have Cheryl come up, and she's first going to talk about Justin Yim, and then she's going to end with our third-place math team. So I'm going to turn the mic at this time over to Cheryl Ballinger, who is our advisor of our math team.
Okay, thank you for having us. I would like to start out, first of all, with an award that Justin Yim was honored to receive this year. So every year, there's a math test called the AMC Test, American Mathematics Competition, given to over 200,000 students in the U.S., and there are two parts to this test. One is a freshman sophomore, one is a junior senior, and this year, Justin Yim was first place, took first-place ranking in the entire state of Illinois. We have never had that before, and it's awesome, awesome achievement. Okay, and then this year, our math team, which I have the pleasure of coaching, the students on math team are enthusiastic about math, they're just enthusiastic, fun-to-coach students, and this year, we were finished third place in the state down at University of Illinois. So I am going to try to look around, and as I call your name, if you could come up and get your award, that would be great, and I'll, if I don't see you, I'll come back if I miss somebody at the end. So Navida Bala. Helen Dang, I think I saw Helen, Helen Dang. I do want to just mention Helen, among the almost 300 sophomores down at U of I, placed ninth in the geometry test, so she did an awesome job there. And Mark is the president of math team this year. Catherine Kuzwarra. And I wanted to mention again, among about 300 sophomores that were there, Prathusha placed fifth in the state on the geometry test. And Justin is a freshman, and he placed first in the state on the senior competition, so awesome job.
Next, I would like to introduce our WISE team, which is an engineering team. Our team took seventh this year, I'm sorry, fifth this year, and Mr. Ravenscraft is unable to attend. So at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the students to come forward, and this is for their fifth place in state for the WISE competition, for the state finals. First, I'd like Catherine Bulas to come forward. Next, I'd like Matt Gwynn, if he's here, to come forward. Is Matt here? Matt individually took fifth place. Congratulations, Matt. Next, Mark Yun, please come forward. Next, David Kočić, is he here, David? David placed second in physics, is he here tonight? Okay. Next, Michaela Calvarone, who took fourth place in biology, please come forward. Eric Lang took third place in physics, Eric Lang. Sixth place in English is Michelle Liu, is she here? Okay. Next, engineering graphics, sixth place Tyler Peterson. I don't believe I saw him. Tyler's not here? Okay. Beth Reiner took sixth place in engineering. Okay, next, Alex Ravinsky for the fifth-place state finish. Is Alex here? Okay. Victoria Steigerwall, fifth-place member of the team. Matt Trabreezy, don't think I saw him. Andrew Wang. And lastly, for Vernon Hills, we have our girls' track and field team. Our girls won the sectional title, they won the division, and took second in the conference, and won the sectional title, so they've had an extremely successful year. And at this time, I'd like the following girls to come forward. First, Ally Tran, please come forward. She's got a long list here, so I'll read this off. Ally took seventh in the state in the long jump, she placed fifth in state as a member of the four-by-two hundred meter run, meter relay, second place in state in the four-by-four meter relay. So congratulations to Ally on those terrific state finishes. Next, we have Abby Letts, is Abby here? Abby is a member of our fifth, seventh place four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay. Congratulations, Abby. Next, Tara Rooney, is Tara here? Okay. Tara was on our four-by-eight relay. Samantha Hirschman, is she here? Okay. How about Danielle Fiorito? Danielle is also a member of our four-by-eight hundred-meter relay that finished seventh in state. Next, we have Taylor Crew, and why don't we have Taylor and Taylor Pearson and Allison Peacock, because you guys were all on the same relay. Let's have all you guys come forward, you're on two state relays. All three of these girls placed fifth in state in the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay, and they also, along with Ally, are a member of the second-place in state four-by-four hundred-meter relay.
We have a little orange in the back lingering there, waiting to be recognized. First, we have our two debate coaches, Amy Wiggins and Brian Boss, and they're going to announce one very special debater who is unable to make it to the Winter Sports Awards. Or not sports awards. Board Awards.
Brian and I are very honored tonight to present to you Osman Jamil for his accomplishments and contributions to the Libertyville High School debate team throughout the past four years. Since his freshman year, Osman has been an essential member of our team as both a leader and as a commentator. He has placed at numerous regional competitions, he has placed at the Illinois Communication and Theater Association Novice JV State Tournament, and he has also, for the past three years, placed at the IHSA Varsity State Tournament. And tonight, we are honoring him not only for breaking into the finals at the 2012 competition, but also for being named to the All-State Debate Team for Public Forum Division. As his coach over the past four years, I've seen him grow as a student, as a debater, and as a person, and one thing that I've noticed about him is his leadership skills and his communication skills, as well as his ability to connect with others, make him a natural debater, public speaker, teacher, leader, and role model. For the last two years, in addition to studying for varsity-level competition, he has led our practices by engaging the younger novice members of our team in the study of competitive debate, and he has absolutely inspired them to emulate not only his accomplishments, but his dedication to the team. He has been a pleasure to know and a pleasure to coach over the past four years. Our success in our program, it has grown over the past four years, mostly because of him and his leadership, and we are very sad that we're going to lose him next year, but we are excited for his future academic and extracurricular achievements at Northwestern. So we honor him for all of his accomplishments, but especially for making it to the All-State
Next, we have Mike Bush, physics teacher, and he will be announcing our physics team and Physics Bowl winners.
The LHS physics team has the opportunity to compete in two different major competitions, one of which has actually grown from being on the national level to now truly being an international competition with over 250 schools and 5,000 students participating from the United States, Canada, China, Italy, this year was a new addition. So it's truly a global competition, and this is known as the Physics Bowl. We have two levels of competition in the Physics Bowl. The first is for our first-year physics students, and our first-year students took first place in the Illinois and Iowa region with top-five qualifier scores of the following individuals, some of whom are not here this evening. So we have Claire Eitman, Claire's not here this evening, Richard Pan. Richard is not here. Nishad Patki. Nishad? Nathan Wolf is not here this evening. Nathan, it should be noticed, scored the second-highest score in the Illinois and Iowa region. And then finally, Alex Wang. Alex actually scored the highest score in the Illinois and Iowa region. In Division II, which is for our second-year physics students, they also took first place in the Illinois and Iowa region, but they also scored as the sixth-place school overall across all competing schools, so that was an outstanding accomplishment. So contributing to that score, we have Sandeep Balasubramanian. Christopher Lampel, who is not here this evening. He earned the second-highest score in the Illinois and Iowa region for Division II. Nathan, it should be noticed, was the highest score in the Illinois and Iowa region for Division II. In addition, the second competition in which we participate is the United States Physics Team Selection Competition. Every year, there's an International Physics Olympiad that is held, and countries from around the globe compete in this, and the United States process of choosing their team is a rigorous set of exams that are given throughout the country, and there's a qualifying exam, and then there's a semifinal exam, and then the team is picked from there. This year, Libertyville was honored to receive four students who were named as national semifinalists, which puts them in the top 10% of the nation of physics students. Libertyville also had the most team members of any school that participated from Illinois with four, and we represented nearly a quarter of the students represented from Illinois. There were 17 total that were selected in Illinois, so it was an outstanding accomplishment for us. You've already met one of our national semifinalists, Nate Honle. Another one you've just seen recently, Osman Jamil. Christopher Lampel, who you heard me mention in the Physics Bowl competition also, was
And next, to honor the LHS math team, is math team sponsor and math teacher, Rick Brenner.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for recognizing us tonight. The LHS math team had a very good season. We finished second in the UN Division and Conference, and we finished second in the Illinois Math League competition and eighth at state. And I would like to recognize our state participants. Daniel Hartung. Daniel Hartung. Raoul Conianchalel. Heather Legan. Tim Lee. Kevin Lu. Joey Nedlund. Richard Pan. Nishad Padke. Alex Wang. Alec Zhang. I believe the other students are not here tonight, and please holler now if I missed you. Melanie Ching. Stevie Zhang. Dmitri Vlahakis. Pooja Sajiv. I find out now than tomorrow. Ankur Astoghi. Aaron Neal. Noah Marcus. Sandeep Alasubramanian. And I think I called Tim Lee. Thank you.
When you see these participants come forward, I don't know about you, but I'm always amazed at how many are in multiple competitive activities for which they prepare simultaneously, which is amazing. Our next is probably one of our newest competitive activities, the Science Olympiad. And here to tell you a little bit about that is Ursula Aherd and Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Is this really on? Okay. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity just to highlight some of these students that are amazing. Science Olympiad is an activity that involves freshmen through seniors. There's 23 events. It's a national competition held at the state level. 23 events, anywhere between two and three members in each event. This team, in two short years, went to fifth place in the state. Last year, we were 16th. This year, we were fifth in the state overall in the AA Division, which is an amazing accomplishment for such a young team. We have one graduating senior at this point, and so the rest of the team members, we look forward to very exciting things next year. We'd like to introduce you to our members that are here tonight. Max Allen. Max is our graduating senior. Wes Allen. Rosanna Chen. Megan Harder. Heather Legan. Jason Lieb. Colleen Paulicky. Connor Robinson. Tommy Wagner. Jessica Yin. Joey Nedlund. And I'd just like to read the names of the students that weren't able to come tonight. And if you happen to be here and I missed you, please do the same thing you did for the math team. That was awesome. Thank you. Okay. Adam Blythe. Charlie Burnett. Kelly Lubbers. Aaron Neal. Michael Price. Gordon Schlitt. Patrick Slade. Colin Zhu. And Marcel Joseph. And just to wrap it up, I'd like to just give you a highlight of the events and where they placed in the top 25%. In astronomy, they placed 12th. In chemistry, they placed 7th. Dynamic Planet, 10th. Experimental Design, 5th. Fermi Questions, 10th. Forensic, 6th. Gravity Vehicle, 5th. 11th in helicopters. 12th in optics. 3rd in robot arm. 6th, sounds of music. 8th, technical problem solving. 10th, thermodynamics. 3rd in towers. 12th in water quality. 3rd, write it, do it. 6th, elastic launch glider. 8th in geocaching. 5th in green generation. 12th in material science. Forty-eight teams in the state. We were in the top in 16 of them and fifth overall in the state. Awesome group of students.
Okay. Keeping with the theme of the night, if we missed anybody, just start hooting and hollering. All right. That was spectacular. It's a little intimidating. Okay. Let's see. I'll move them along here. Where are we? President's report. Tonight, it's my pleasure, actually, to recognize our four outgoing student school board representatives. And I'll tell you, we really appreciate all that you guys do. I know it takes a lot of time. You're very busy, which is one of the things that got you here. But we certainly appreciate all the things that you bring every month, that not only in our meetings at lunchtime once a month, but our meetings here, that really help us get a very good firsthand perspective of student life in Vernon Hills and Libertyville. So thanks for all of your dedication and commitment. And to the four new reps, which we'll introduce in a minute, I'll just let you know that they've set a very high standard. That you've given us a lot of feedback. And there will be a few new challenges in store next year. Okay? So again, thanks for all your hard work. So I would like to recognize from Libertyville, permission before, who's not here, isn't that right? And Dhrinka Zuhvi. We have plaques for everybody that say the Community High School District 128 Board of Education extends a special thank to you, Dhrinka, for your service as a 2011-2012 Libertyville High School Student Co-Representative to the Board. Your dedication on behalf of our fellow students has enhanced the communication and understanding of issues between students and Board. Thank you very much. Okay. And from Vernon Hills High School, first our alternate, Charlie Garrett. And Kate Lee. Okay. And also, I want to recognize the 2012-2013 student school board representatives. You know, one of the hardest things that you have to do as the board president is work with the building principals to select the new representatives. A typical day is about 10 people that we interview in the morning. And I will say this, many, if not most, if not all of the people that we interview probably could interview for a job in my company. Their interviewing skills are so good, and it's quite intimidating. You can imagine, you know, what is it, usually four or five-on-one? And they really do a tremendous job. Yeah. They do a tremendous job. And I got to tell you, it's one of the hardest things we got to do is to pick one or two for these positions. So you guys did an excellent, outstanding job. I want to commend you for all of the great things that you had to say. I want to commend you for all of the great things that you had to talk about. Again, when I do this, I find it very intimidating. I'm sure glad I wasn't having to interview for that position. So from Libertyville, we have co-reps, Aaron Coburn and Nishad Padke. And then from Vernon Hills, our alternate next year, Brandon Cohen. Representative Allison Tran. Okay. Anything else on that? Good. Congratulations and thanks again. Next, 2012-2013 IASB Annual Dues.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve the annual dues for IASB for 2012-2013.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Trudy?
Aye.
Constance?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Strance?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, more than curious. All right. And last but not least, not to let you off the hook, one last update from each of our two representatives. Who would like to go first?
I think what we're going to do is we're going to do updates on what's happened in the past month, and then our own tribute to the board after that. So I will start. First prom was May 19th, and everything went well. I thought the venue was really great for the size of school that we have, and everyone had a really good time. Both the boys' and girls' track team from Libertyville sent student athletes down to state, which was a big accomplishment, and we were really excited for them. And graduation is Friday. Well, Thursday for you guys, right? Friday for Libertyville. So we're all looking forward to that, and can't believe that past four years have flown by as fast as they have.
And at Vernon Hills, we also had our prom. And it was, Nitro Remember was the theme, and it definitely was. Everyone was just beautiful and amazing. And we also crowned our first prom king and queen, Edgar Navarres and Lisette Gonzalez. So that's a new thing for the senior class to leave behind. And we also had some state qualifiers as well. For boys' track, Gabe Cotton qualified in the 200-meter. And for boys' tennis, Ishmael Katarov was also a state qualifier. And the girls' soccer team were also co-champions of the NSC Prairie Division, as well as the boys' baseball team, who also won their regional championship.
All right. And we had our spring play, "And Then They Came For Me," which was about the Holocaust and the story of Anne Frank. And it was a very emotional, dramatic work of theater that I think our members of the theater took a lot from and learned a lot about history through our arts program here at Vernon Hills High School. And we had AP testing for two weeks, and there were no bells because of AP testing. So whenever we had weird schedules, everyone was confused. So AP testing is fun because, like, everyone is studying, and everyone's really tired, and no one's getting any sleep, and everyone's really excited for the summer, and it's just a weird time of the year. But I'm hoping that everyone scored well on their AP tests so that they can get some college credit. We had some final concerts and recitals in our fine arts department. Orchises have their dance recital. We have the art show, cabaret for choir, and the band and orchestra concerts. So all of these were our last hurrahs in the fine arts department. And there were a lot of tears and goodbyes, or at least for me. And it's just been a fabulous last month for the fine arts department as well. And we had our last recognition assembly, the spring recognition assembly. And this year, or this assembly, we had something interesting where our theme was boys versus girls. And so all the boys wore pink, and all the guys wore blue, and it was kind of a competition, and girls pretty much won everything. And there was a singing contest and, like, voting with your phone, like, who's better. And so girls won, obviously, and that was a lot of fun. And lastly, we had our honors day and senior breakfast on Thursday. And it was really fun to, you know, be with the seniors for third-to-last time. This was third-to-last graduation, second-to-last, and last is going to be the senior party. And it was really fun to dress up all fancy and then go up to get awards and honors day. And so that's that. And right now, we are in our finals week, and tomorrow is our last finals. So I just want to say, these juniors are here today before their last finals, you know, giving up their time. So good luck tomorrow. And yeah, so that's it. Oh, yeah. So here's my tribute to the board. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to see what goes on behind the scenes in the district. And I think, like, I always had a big passion for our district and our school. But now, I just like, I'm just really thankful for everything that I have here because, you know, and for everyone that, you know, makes things happen. You know, I take granted sometimes, like, all the amazing facilities we have and all the amazing programs. And now I understand, like, what goes behind the scenes to make all of that work. So thank you so much. And I'm going to take this experience to my future education career. I'm going to Northwestern University in the fall to major in music education. And so I am hoping to take this experience and transfer it to making a great education program in the fine arts for my future students. So thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the support and the opportunity. I learned so much this year, and it was crazy to think of all the hard work that goes into it. Today, I was proud to bring my dad from Arizona to show him around the school. And he was just amazed at how great everything was and how organized everything seemed and the cleanliness of the buildings and the support of the teachers. So I just want to say thank you for providing an excellent place to learn. And I know I'm going to miss it so much. And I'll bring all the support with me from Vernon Hills. Always a cougar, even though I'm going to Augustana for mass communication journalism.
To the school board, thank you so much for allowing all of us the opportunity to be a part of the school board and letting us into your world. I have learned so much, and I'm so grateful to everyone here. Dr. Swig, I don't think I would have gotten a chance to know you if this wasn't an opportunity, and I'm so thankful for that. I will miss, you know, seeing you every month or twice a month at our luncheons and at the board meetings. Dr. Swig, I can't believe this year has gone by so fast. I'm so grateful to you for giving me so many opportunities and inspiring my leadership, helping me realize my potential as well. I'm definitely going to miss you. Mr. Grudy, I remember the first thing I said to you when I walked into that interview room last April. I said, "I think I play golf with your daughter." And it was great to get to know you this past year, and I'm glad I got to see you out on the golf course as well. And it was great to get to know you this past year, and I'm glad I got to see you out on the golf course as well during the fall. And thank you so much for this opportunity again. Dr. Lee isn't here, but if he was here, I'd say this to him. He's at his daughter's graduation, so I'm happy he's there. But I'm so grateful and blessed to have gotten to know Dr. Lee. And I'm still so honored because he asked me last August to give a tribute to the teachers at their welcome back breakfast. And Ms. Toddard helped me with that as well. I remember going into her office and showing her that. And just for this opportunity, it's been so amazing. And thank you to everyone who has helped all of us, you know, realize our potential. And for, like Kate said, to recognize what you guys do for our school district and for making our education so valuable and so fantastic. I will, this makes me want to be part of, you know, a school board when I'm older and out in the real world. So and also to you guys, it's been so fun getting to know you, and we're going to definitely do our Baker Square luncheon so we can get that from college. So thank you.
Okay. And speaking on behalf of the Board and as a community member and as a fellow parent of a graduating senior, I just want you guys to know that working with young adults like you guys really makes it all worth it and just makes it a completely enjoyable experience. I know I had a chance to thumb through the yearbook last weekend. It is just so exciting to open the yearbook and just see the smiles and the happiness and the breadth of the programs and all the wonderful things that you guys do, all the wonderful things that all your teachers do. And it just makes this time of year especially a very wonderful and exciting time of year. So thanks for everything you do to make it so worthwhile, I think, for all of us in what we do. Okay? Good luck in all of your activities next year.
Where are you going to school?
Oh, I'm going to the University of Miami in Ohio to study finance and French.
Very good. Okay. Superintendent's Report. As Dorinka mentioned, Dr. Lee is not with us tonight. He had some other activities to take care of. His daughter is graduating, and she will be a future Wildcat next year. So we congratulate he and his family on that tremendous accomplishment as well. So sitting in for Dr. Lee, Dr. Fleming.
Just, excuse me, just a few additional recognitions of students from earlier this evening. Congratulations to Libertyville High School senior Elizabeth Olendai, who was named to the Daily Herald 2012 Academic Team. District 128 students receiving honorable mentions in the competition were Christine Curry at Vernon Hills High School, Mark Jung at Vernon Hills High School, and Nathan Wolf at Libertyville. Congratulations to the Vernon Hills High School students who are named May Cougar Class Act Award winners. These students have shown excellent character throughout the school year and are being recognized for it. Adriana Vargas, Emma Schuster, Jared Stern, Jake Nabat, Carley Ranhell, Kyle Thomas, Marissa Brown, Megan Ramirez, and Nellie Rahimi, and Sean Ricky. And finally, congratulations to German teacher Alex Kurt and his six Vernon Hills High School students who demonstrated excellent work in German class by achieving high scores on the AATG National German Examp this year. Nicholas Weber, Nadia Hugh, Claudia Moran, Casey Hill, and Jordan Reich placed in the 80th percentile. Jeremy Goldman placed in the 90th percentile, both nationally. So congratulations to all these students. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Oh, I do, I lied. It doesn't conclude. The good news portion of the.
Consider the second one, the good news as well.
Yes. Can I have that any second now? We have a pool update that maybe I failed to bring with me. Mary, do you have that by chance? Okay. As you're aware, we get here, as you are aware, many of you, we've had, we've been working on the pools for the last, for most of the school year with IDPH. And after considerable efforts on the part of, too many people to name here, we now have compliance at both high schools. We just received the information from Vernon Hills High School this afternoon. So both high schools will be up and running by the end of tomorrow, I think it is. So there's a lot of credit that has to go out to a lot of people. Jess Porres is probably the head of that list.
Joe.
And Joe Tomaselli both put in a huge amount of effort. And we thank the patience of our community and the dedication of Katz Aquatics and everyone involved with that. And I can't go without mentioning our two athletic directors, Brian McDonald and Brian Kelly. And the work they did to organize different locations for all of our organizations that use our pools. Guess we never knew how much our pools were used until they're not in a state of function for us anymore. So we appreciate that. And that, as Pat said, is very good news for all of us. So thank you to everyone. And then we have two donations that I would like to acknowledge. Ronald Coke Alves has donated $3,000 to the Francis Mesicrig Coke Alves Scholarship Fund. That's a community high school District 128 trustee for the scholarship fund. The scholarship is used to support the education of a chosen student and is awarded upon graduation. A second donation by Susan Angster, who donated a Rosetta Stone program, which includes Latin I, two honors, and three honors for the Libertyville High School International Language Department Program. So thank you to both of those donors. We also had the Board, you'll see there in the Board packets, we had four FOIA requests this month that have been filled. And then we need to move into a recommendation for approval of the amended school calendar for the 2011-12 school year.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the amended calendar for the 2011-12 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then a recommendation for the proposed 2012-13 Committee and Board meeting schedule.
I move to accept the 2012-13 proposed Committee and Board meeting schedule.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody from the public who would like to speak? Haven't had a chance to say this, so please limit your comments if you can. Okay. Face your clear out of here quickly. Okay. Next on the agenda, the consent vote agenda is listed and was reviewed in committee. Could I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, update Chairperson Mauer.
Okay. First up, we have the 2012-13 textbook adoptions. And as you'll remember, we reviewed the list and the textbooks at the last P and P Committee meeting. We are well within the budget allotted to us, so we are looking for a motion to approve that textbook adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next on the list, we have three educational tour requests as listed. We have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
And finally, we have employment of employees. We're looking to approve those employees as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye. And this concludes the Program Personnel Committee meeting report.
Okay. Facilities and Finance Committee, keep me there.
I have.
Okay. Chairperson Arthur.
Thank you. We have several bid awards to make motions on this evening. First one up is a motion to accept the computer systems bid by Heartland Business Systems of Lisle, Illinois in the amount of $96,800 for 160 computers.
I move to accept the bid for the Heartland Computer Systems for the computers.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Second up is a motion to accept the base bid and alternates one, two, and three in the amount of $46,050 from EHC Industries of Wakanda for the summer 2012 asbestos abatement at Libertyville High School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries.
Third up is a motion to accept the bid and alternate one in the amount of $29,902 from Libertyville Tile and Carpet of Libertyville to provide the removal and replacement of vinyl chloride tile at Libertyville High School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fourth up is a motion to accept the base bid and alternates one, two, and three in the amount of $51,776 from Libertyville Tile and Carpet of Libertyville to provide the removal and replacement of carpet at Libertyville High School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Grudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And last is actually a motion to reject the bids for the Libertyville High School weight room equipment because the specifications were incomplete and did not include all of the equipment that is needed.
I make a motion to reject all bids. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Ranser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassin.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye. All right. Motion carries.
And that concludes the Finance and Facilities Committee.
Okay. Thanks. I actually made a mistake. Property Camille, I'll give you one brief update. We are still in discussions with the Village of Libertyville over the extension of the brand lease. I guess we're getting closer. I guess. It's still, the discussions are still surrounding the cost of the asbestos removal and the event we have to tear down the building. So, you know, they want to meet, we want to meet, it's a side of the chance.
What's the critical date on that, there's a June date? I thought you made a difference.
I think the latest is to extend to July. Yeah.
To get to June or?
Yeah. For another month. And we're going to try and meet this week. So next week, we're trying to set some. The current proposal is to extend it to July now, is that right? Yeah. Okay. Because we just haven't had a chance to get together. All right. Special Education District of Blake County.
Yes. Subject, we will be, the tentative budget has been presented in committees. We're in small meetings, and then it will be presented at the June court meeting for SEDOL. And there's some things that are certainly still to be determined. They're in contract negotiations and that, so none of those potential changes are in the tentative budget. Health insurance changes aren't done there yet, so I think that's going to change. But it is forecast to go down for a couple of reasons. First of all, a lot of the non, excuse me, the sector classrooms, classrooms that are held and like, for instance, we have three of those that we're taking back in our district. There's a lot of those throughout SEDOL that are going back. And so 125 students are going back into their districts as opposed to SEDOL. And so that's lowering the budget by quite a bit. So there also has been a large influx of retirements. So there's, they're becoming 31 teachers retiring this year, so that's going to contribute a large chunk of lowering the budget. And there's just more to come as this time goes on and some of the other things are settled. But it did, in the tentative budget, the budget goes from last year, the estimated actual budget, which is at $74 million, drops to $71 million for the tentative budget. So that's the trends.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, no update. I will remind everybody, these are active times in Libertyville, however. So anything you can do to stay informed and up to date on the latest emerging issues is probably a good idea. Okay. Anything else? I think that's it. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.